Good evening and welcome to the November 17th, 2021 Board of Education meeting. At this point, I would like to entertain a motion for the board to move into executive session in accordance with open meetings law to discuss the employment history of particular person, negotiations, and litigation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. It's officially 7:30. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 17th, 2021 Board of Education Business Meeting. Please welcome to the podium Alexis Kamunale, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Could everyone please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, changes in the meeting agenda. Schedule B, replacement page, and Addendum B.19 and replacement page, Schedule A 6. Number three, students and staff recognition.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our favorite part of the board meeting. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Christine Sacco, our lead, our teacher for elementary and a teacher at Minne Saki Elementary School. Christine?
Good evening, Board of Education, community, and faculty members. I'd like to start by thanking the Board of Education for inviting us here tonight to honor the Three Village 2021 Hexagon Project Award winners from Jolinas, Murphy, and Minne Saki. The Hexagon Project uses the hexagon as a metaphor for independence, the understanding that although we are an independent nation, we belong to a larger world community with shared concerns for mankind. Just as each hexagon connects to the next, we are connected to the world. While participating in the Hexagon Project, our students were able to engage in discussions with their peers regarding real-world issues and decide on a theme of their choice. Themes included body image, self-esteem, the environment, diversity, equity, social justice, and more. The final artwork is meant to bring awareness to the issues that face our world today. The beautiful hexagon artworks that are over there were created by our students last school year, were part of the 2021 International Hexagon exhibit this past September. The exhibit included artwork from artists in Australia, Egypt, Japan, Poland, Uganda, and the United States. We are so proud of the accomplishments of our Three Village artists and congratulate them on the awards they have received. Thank you again for supporting, encouraging, and honoring the Three Village 2021 Hexagon And I will give the first award to Emma Snyder.
I'd now like to introduce Mr. Sacco from Jolinas to present his award winners.
Hi, just one moment. Emma and Christine, we're going to take a picture together?
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to introduce the Jolinas Hexagon winners. And the Hexagon contest or competition exhibition has been going on, I think, between Minne Saki and Jolinas for almost eight years now. It's grown to be quite big with many countries participating, as Ms. Sacco just said. And we always do well. Our students really embrace the freedom, the creative freedom and expression that the Hexagon exhibition does allow them to do. So with that in mind, I'm going to call the award winners, and if they're not here, I'm just going to read their name anyway. So up first is Agatha Arhipkina. Come on up, Agatha.[346.03][346.03](applause) Zoe Zao. Raymond Lang. Miley Madabru. Amy Yang, not sure if she's here. Clara Slanuski. Caroline Hammonds. Vivian Yee. And our final winner for Jolinas is Judy Hu. I'd like to call up Lisa Sacco, Murphy art teacher, to present her awards.
All right. I believe this is the first year that Murphy Junior High School has participated in the Hexagon Project, and I would just like to say I am extremely proud of these five members who received awards. So without further ado, here are the Murphy National Junior Art Honor Society winners. Alexis Kamunale. Congratulations. Medina Jalili. Dushika Sharavirala. Congratulations. Sophia Green. Congrats. And last but not least, Amal Sani. Congratulations.
Once again, it is such a wonderful opportunity to honor and congratulate our amazing art students and their talented art teachers. So thank you all for coming this evening. We know that you all get up early, and you are certainly welcome to stay for the board meeting, but if at this point you would like to leave, we certainly will not be insulted. And we know that you have an early start to the day. So thank you again and congratulations on a wonderful achievement.
Lisa Capiello has a high school award.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Capiello? Sorry, I'm sorry, I did not see you. Okay, so would you like to come and present? Okay, my apologies. You are hiding in the back. If we can just indulge us for just a few more minutes, we really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
There we go. Thank you to the board for honoring my student Isabella Klug. Isabella was able to create a music video for the All American International Film Festival through Atlantic Records. So she was nominated with people all around the world and made it to the finalists for the All American Film Festival. So we're so, so honored. Isabella is away at college right now. This was from last year's video production class. Her parents may be here. If not, I accept the word on their behalf, but I'm sure she's very excited about it. So thank you.[692.16][692.16](applause)
Are Mr. and Mrs. Klug here? Are they here this evening? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Capiello, and thank you to everyone. We appreciate it. Have a wonderful evening.
Wander, is that everybody? We can begin? Yeah? Okay, thank you so much. Oh, no. Sorry? Uh huh. Oh, I can't look. I'm trying to look my... Oh, okay, good. Oh, hi, I didn't even see you there. Thank you. Now we're good? Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the boardroom. So number four, we're going to turn this over to Riley Meckley, our student representative report from the high school.
Hello, everybody. Since my last report, Ward Melville Key Club has successfully organized the community-wide Trigger Tree Street event. After not having it last year, the event had to be reimagined, and it took place outdoors. It began on October 29th at 4:00 p.m., and the turnout was amazing. There were hundreds of young kids walking the perimeter of Ward Melville and getting candy from the high school clubs. In fact, there were so many people participating that Key Club had to run out and buy more than $500 extra worth of candy in addition to the hundreds of dollars they already had. It is safe to say that the high school students enjoyed giving back to their community and promoting the Halloween spirit with the younger kids. The smiles on the little kids' faces definitely made it worth it. The Friday before Halloween, student government organized the Ward Melville Great Pumpkin Activity. Students had the opportunity to buy a bag of candy and have it delivered to other peers around the school. Over $500 was raised for the Stony Brook Children's Hospital. Last week, quarter one came to an end, and many high school students wrapped up all their assignments and did their best to get grades up. Most seniors have sent out their college applications by now and are waiting to hear back from schools. Fall sports came to a close as teams competed in their playoff games and championship matches. Girls' cross-country is, in fact, the only fall sport left competing. On November 20th, the top runners have qualified for the New York State Cross-Country Federation Championships. We wish them good luck. Moving forward, the Ward Melville Physical Education teachers have begun preparing for the annual junior versus senior volleyball tournament. Teams are being formed in each gym class, and the games will take place closer to December break. There will also be a town hall with Principal Mr. Bernhard. After Thanksgiving break, every student can post questions that they have about the school or Ward Melville on their grade Google classrooms, and Mr. Bernhard will answer all of them after school on December 16th at a student government meeting. A video will be posted of his answers for any student who is not in the club. That's all for today. Thank you.
Excellent job, Riley, as always. Such a pleasure. Okay. Okay, so now we're going to turn our attention over to Dr. Baum. He's going to go through the seven policies. Four, the first four are going to be for a second read, and the last three, we're going to approve tonight if the board approves.
So I'd like to, if I may, just briefly treat 8110 and 8112, School Building Safety and Health and Safety Committee together, as they are very much connected. The reason for the modifications to these two policies is state-driven. The state recently changed the timeline for when building inspections take place. This brings our policy into alignment that we do the inspections when the state tells us to. It also codifies our practices that we already have with the school safety building committee. This just puts it into writing, and it requires a member of that committee to participate in any building inspections. The next policy I have is 5460, child abuse, maltreatment, or neglect in a domestic setting. If you recall, a number of months ago, we modified our policy for child abuse in an educational setting. This is for a domestic setting. Again, it's statutorily driven. This requires the district to cooperate with Child Protective Services in any investigation that they are undertaking. And it also clarifies which number, phone number, school district employees as mandated reporters report their complaints on. The next policy, Student Learning Standards 4000. This modifies the policy, again, to bring it into alignment with the recent changes to the Commissioner's Regulations for Career and College and Career Readiness. In the previous policy, college and career readiness referred to just the math standards. This tightens it and incorporates math, science, and technology into college and career readiness. The next policy is 1440. This just is a very simple change, changes complaints about school personnel to school personnel discussions and providing a mechanism for any member of the public, the community, to raise concerns if they have any on with personnel. The Public Participation at Board Meetings 1230. This merely stricken board members from reference into, from reference in the policy, so they are subject to public discussion. And finally, 6410, Authorized and Electronic Signatures. A number of years ago, the Congress passed a law that authorized electronic signatures for conducting business. After U.S. Congress passed that law, New York State Legislature also passed laws authorizing electronic signatures. This codifies the practice and puts the rubber seal, so to speak, on the practice of including or utilizing electronic signatures when doing business. Any questions? These were reviewed by the board's policy committee as well as properly vetted by our attorneys.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to vote on A through D for, to go for a second read? So moved. Second? Second. Irene?
You should see it on your screen.
Okay, cast your vote, please.
Okay, five, yes. Motion passes.
Is it going to appear, or?
No, it's not going to appear yet. It appears on the next meeting, the two meetings.
Oh, okay. Okay, so the next three, E, Policy 1440, 1230, and 6410, what we would like to approve tonight. Can I have a motion?
Those are individual.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, Policy 1440. Can I have a motion? Second. Any questions or discussions? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? You'll cast your vote as soon as it comes up.
Five zero, motion passes.
Thank you. F, Policy 1230. Can I please have a motion? So moved. Second? Second. Okay. Questions or discussion? Okay. Cast your vote.
Five zero, motion passes.
Thank you. And letter G, 6410, can I have a motion, please? Second? Second. Okay, and we're going to cast our vote?
Five zero, motion passes.
Thank you. Whoops. Okay. Items for board action. Letter A, affiliation agreement with Long Island University. Kevin Scanlon?
Yes, this continues our affiliation agreements with colleges and universities throughout the country. This is for clinical experience for student teachers coming into Three Village.
Can I have a motion? Thank you. Can I have a second? Thank you. Okay. Going to cast our votes? Irene?
Five zero, motion passes.
Thank you. Letter B, affiliation agreement with the State University of New York School of Social Welfare. Kevin Scanlon?
Same as the last, it's just continuing our affiliation agreements with further schools.
Second? Irene? Cast your vote.
Five zero, motion passes.
Thank you. Letter C, 2022-2023, new courses and course name changes request. Kevin Scanlon?
The Curriculum Development Committee for the district, which is comprised of administrators and teachers, meets every year to review new courses and changes to names of courses. The document you have in front of you is the committee's recommendations for next year.
Can I have a motion, please? Second? Second. Okay. Any questions or discussion? Cast your vote, please.
Five zero, motion passes.
Thank you. Letter D, amendment to the affiliation agreement with Baylor University.
Yes, once again, we previously approved the affiliation agreement with Baylor University. They had just one change, and it was reflected in the new documentation.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion? Second? Second. Any questions or discussion? Okay, cast your vote.
Five zero, motion passes.
Thank you. Letter E, approve floorball program indemnification agreement. Jeff Carlson?
This is a program sponsored by the New York Islanders for our secondary schools. Floorball is similar to hockey, but we don't need an ice rink for it. The Islanders provide all the equipment, they just require board approval and indemnification for any student injuries. This agreement has been reviewed by both our attorney and our insurance company. There's no cost to the district for this program.
Thank you. Can I have a motion? Second? Any questions or discussion? Okay, cast your vote, please.
Five zero, motion passes.
Thank you. Letter F, approve independent educational evaluation agreement. Jeff Carlson?
This, these are three agreements with outside providers to provide evaluation services in accordance with an independent educational evaluation of a student.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion? Second? Second. Okay. Any questions or discussion? Cast your vote, please. Cast your vote, please.
Five zero, motion passes.
Thank you. Letter G, acceptance of donations, Jeff Carlson.
We have two donations. The first is $5,000 in various gift cards, as well as some school supplies and backpacks donated from the Dorazi Bu Chichia family, I hope I pronounced that correctly, if I didn't, I apologize, to the district in memory of Alyssa Dorazi, who was a teaching assistant in our pre-K program. These will be distributed similar to the way we distribute gift cards through our food pantry. And then we have a check in the amount of $100 donated by Ms. Lisa Basilico to establish a new scholarship fund to be called the JoJo Memorial Scholarship Fund in memory of student JoJo LaRosa. We expect more donations to this, and they will go into that fund when they are received.
Thank you very much. Okay, second? Okay, any questions or discussion? Please cast your vote.
Five zero, motion passes.
Thank you. Declaration of Surplus Equipment, Letter H, Jeff Carlson.
We have some gymnastics equipment that is in no longer safe, usable condition, some musical equipment, and as well as a foosball table and a puppet theater from the Mount SAC program, all in unusable condition.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion? Second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Okay, please cast your vote.
Five zero, motion passes.
Thank you. Letter I, Declaration of Surplus Textbooks, Jeff Carlson.
These are from Arrowhead Elementary School, and they are no longer part of our curriculum.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, please cast your vote.
Five zero, motion passes.
Thank you. Letter J, Personnel Items Instructional, Gary DeBruski.
Yes, so on the agenda this evening are a few resignations, one is a nurse and one is a teaching assistant. We have several instructional appointments, including two nurses and a teaching assistant. Tonight, you're also voting on the four mid-year TA tenures, a change of status from a lead to a chair. We have an additional five sub-teacher and TAs. You'll also be voting on coaches, coaches and athletic supervision, as well as nine co-curricular clubs, SAT prep, PSAT proctoring.
Okay, thank you very much. Can I, okay, second? Any questions or discussion? Please cast your vote.
Five zero, motion passes.
Thank you, and congratulations to the newly tenured teachers. Letter K, Personnel Items Non-Instructional, Gary DeBruski.
Yes, we have on the agenda tonight the resignation of six people, SEAs and monitors, one food service worker. You're also going to be approving a leave of absence for one of our clerical, that's an unpaid leave of absence. We have two clerical changes in status. We have, and we have four additional security guards on the agenda tonight.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion, please? Second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or discussions? Okay, please cast your vote.
Five zero, motion passes.
Thank you. Letter L, Recommendations of Committee on Special Education. Subcommittee and Accommodation 504 Plan Meetings of said stated dates.
You can, you can do L and M together.
Perfect. M, Recommendations of Committee on Preschool Special Education Meetings of stated dates. So on L and M, can I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Please cast your vote.
Hold on a second. Five zero, motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to talk, we're going to talk about some items of interest. First, I'd like to throw this out to our district clerk, Inger Germano, for...
Oh, you have N.
I'm sorry?
You have to do minutes.
Where's that?
N.
Oh. Okay. Two different ones. I'm sorry, minutes of October 27th, 2021. Can I have a motion, second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Please vote. It stops at M. Okay.
Okay, five zero, motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, so now we'll go on to some items of interest. This is our second meeting using the board docs, and we're getting better since the last meeting, if you can believe that, it is much better. And we're getting used to it, and it's going, it's going well, huh? Yeah, they can't see my face, no, just kidding. Absolutely, no, it's, it's going better. It's, it's, we've been doing it one way forever, so this is all new, and Inger has spearheaded this. So, of course, with, and Alan, much thanks, but just a couple of things, just to let the community know. Let's address the minutes for August, September, and October. First...
So, August, September will be as a, as a draft on the old system, it's going to be in the, on the regular website, and it's going to go up on the draft on the website. The October 13th will go up on board docs tomorrow as a draft, but it will be in the board docs version, you can go on the meeting for October 13th. That was our first meeting where we were transitioning over for that. Going forward, for all the minutes and any kind of agenda items, if you're looking for any agenda items, now everything is posted right to the agenda. So you can click on any of the detachables, and everything is right there on the agenda. If you have any questions, you need any help, or trying to find any information, just give me a call, and I'll walk you through it. And the minutes will go up on a draft within, within five days, business days, from the actual meeting going forward through board docs. So if you have any questions and you can't find the information, because sometimes it's a little tricky navigating through for the first two, you know, couple times, give me a call, and I'll walk you through it. But this is an effort to streamline and also to give more accessibility to the community for the information, it's right there, stays on the system, and everything's posted right to the agenda. So if you're looking for an item in the past, you can actually search through board docs as well, too, and you can do a report through board docs. So if you're looking for a specific policy or anything that is approved going forward, that will all be in board docs. Another thing, the other information that will be sent, pushed over to board docs within the next week is all the policies. Policies will reflect through the board docs, the old policies will remain on there as the past. We won't take them off the website, but the new policies, everything will be worked through, and the policy flow through board docs, and they'll also be, will also create a spreadsheet, because we're going to cycle through all of our policies that have not been touched within the last five years. So if you have any questions about that, you can give me a call. So it's just a transition process right now. If you have any questions, you're looking for something, can't find it, don't know if it's in the old system, the new, on the website, or in the new system, just give me a call, and I'll be happy to help you.
Thank you very much. And always know that when we do public participation for the 30 minutes for residents only, there is, if there is time, we will absolutely read any emails that come in from people who just can't make it, or what have you. And that is every single meeting. The deadline is the day of the meeting, like today, at 1:00, okay? And that's going forward, it's been in the past, and it will continue, just, just an FYI, okay? So the first, I have a couple of things, and then anybody else on the board, if you have anything, let's, let's talk about it. But the first thing I'd like to talk about is a discussion that we have decided to present to the community, a community forum. So this is something that's going to start in January, and it's going to be posted on the website with an email address. So any questions, concerns, ideas, ideas, suggestions? If you had one thing you could change about Three Village, what would it be? We will not, we will not take any questions or concerns, or what have you, in reference to students or personnel, this is strictly what do you want to know that you don't know, or you have, or you know, and you want to know why? Or you might have a great idea, or it might not be a great idea, but you have an idea, and you want somebody to listen to it. So we're going to set up this email address specifically for this, anyone in the community that you do not have to have children in the community, in the district, it could be anybody who's a resident of Three Village, of course, only, all right? And then all of those questions, concerns, ideas, and so on, they're going to be categorized. So if we have 10 questions with the same, with 10 questions that are the same, we're not going to answer all 10 questions, you're going to get an answer, but it's going to be clumped together in one question if there's multiple, okay? And so we're going to put together a panel of experts that deal with those specific suggestions, ideas, concerns, questions, so on, and we'll put that panel together, and everybody will get a response. It might be at the forum, it might not be, but you will all get a response. And like I said, we're going to combine, combine everything, this is going to go up in January, we will put up the date and the time of the forum, and I think, and the board agrees unanimously that this is a fantastic idea to engage the community more and better. Nothing's ever going to be 100%, but we are trying very hard. Board meetings are not for everything, as we all know, so we're going to try this and see how it goes, and if it goes well, which I suspect it will, and I hope it, I hope it does, we keep everything good, we'll keep doing this. And it's, I think it's a, it's a great, a great idea that we all, that actually Sue was a big part of, actually, this, this idea, to be totally honest, I forgot about that. It was Sue's idea, 100%, and we all agree, and we hope you're happy about that, we hope you embrace it and use it for good purposes, and that's number one. Number two, we also, January's going to be a busy month, so also in January, we're going to be putting together a budget committee. Well, obviously, the budget's coming up, right? So we are going to put out on the website a posting in December asking for participants. We're going to list the dates and the times of the meetings that are going to occur in January, February, and March. Mr. Carlson is going to head this, or spearhead this, obviously, he's the numbers guy, he's the, he's the financial budget administrator. So those dates and times are going to be put up in December, so if you can't make them, please don't ask to be on the committee, because, you know, you're going to take a spot away from somebody who could be there, all, all of those meetings. It's going to be approximately six, maybe more, but approximately six. And the meeting members are going to be announced early January, so we can't have, you know, 200 residents on a budget committee, nothing will get done, and it just will not be effective. So we're going to do a public lottery. So everybody who wants to be on this budget committee, throw your name in, all the instructions will be on the website, and then we are definitely looking, you know, for a broad representation, but whoever gets on, gets on, and it's going to be held publicly, so that nobody could say, you know, anybody picked, picked and chose somebody over somebody else. So the drawing will be held publicly, and again, these meetings will start in January. So if you're interested, look out on the website, it will be posted in December, prior to the holidays, and that's number two. Another engagement tool that actually was suggested by a community member, and we embraced that, and here we are presenting it, and we think that's also unanimously a great idea for the community. Oh, and for those people that don't go on the website, this is also Sue's idea, is she's, we're going to actually put a notice in the, is it the Herald? Yeah, the, the... TBR, Herald, for people who don't go to the website, or may not have children in the district, but would like to be part of this committee. So that will also be published in that newspaper as well for those individuals. What else did I forget?
I think you got it.
Okay. All right. So, does anybody else have anything?
I do. I just wanted to say I attended my first parent university last night, and it was amazing, literally amazing. I am so very, very impressed with the program, with the material, with the presenter, and I, it was the most worthwhile hour I've spent all week, so thank you for everybody who helped put that together.
Very good. And just also, we are coming into holiday times and cold weather, and, and, you know, the need is still there in Three Village, and I think almost all of our schools have food pantries, and we have a lot of, lot of amazing community members and residents that donate, and teachers with, with students and classes and clubs and so on that just do a fantastic job, but we're, there's always, always a need, so if anybody's ever interested, you can go on any individual school website and get that information on where and how to drop off any donations you may have, if you would like and choose to. And right now, we have now, if there's nobody else, we have concluded our business portion of the board meeting. Shari, yes?
Two quick questions. One is about forums, so is the answer and question be open to public, or just between whoever sent the email?
Just whoever, just whoever sent the email.
Okay.
But we are having the...
It will be in public.
In public.
Yeah, I hope they will be open to public, so people can see the answers. Yeah, exactly.
And it will be virtual.
Perfect.
Obviously.
Okay.
Livestreamed.
Second, about the budget committees, so would they meet twice a month? Just want to understand the commitment, so people can contribute.
Yeah. And those two, it's approximately two times each month for three months. This is the first time we're doing this, this is the first time, in many, many years, that Jeff Carlson will be spearheading this. It was done, but many years ago, from my understanding, prior to me, so he's going to, along with other administrators, take the lead on this. There will be the meetings, and the meetings will be, the dates and times will be posted in December, so that people can look ahead and know that they can make those meetings or they can't. Yeah, oh, they'll definitely be in the evening for working parents. Do you want to say anything, or you're good?
As far as the format of the meetings themselves, I thought we would leave that up to when the committee is formed, and see how the committee feels as a group, how they want to proceed, whether they want to have different departments come and present about their department, for instance, maybe one night special education, does a presentation on their department, what's involved with it, and how it, how it impacts our budget, could be athletics, could be whatever, something like that. We could have a secondary principal and an elementary principal talk about how the operation of their buildings is impacted by the budget. We could have, of course, most of our money goes to personnel, so we can have HR there one night to talk about how, how the personnel, the salaries, the contracts, and all of that is impacted in the budget. We'll kind of leave that up to the committee as, as a group to decide how they want it, instead of just me saying, well, here's the information you're going to get.
Right.
We'll see what they want.
Yeah, there definitely has to be a two-way participation and engagement, and I think it's a phenomenal idea, and I really hope that the, the community embraces it, and, And I really hope that the, the community embraces it and, and participates in, in a positive way and works together. Because that's how everything gets done in life is to work together.
I'm sorry, I think this is a great idea. And what I've always found, always, 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 always found is the more that people know about what goes on in, in the schools, the more supportive they are.
Absolutely.
And the same goes for the budget. The more they know about it, I think the more supportive they'll be, so.
It is true, absolutely. Okay, so like I said, this concludes the business portion. So we're going to go on to public participation. I'm going to read a statement and then we'll start the clock. Okay. So this now conclude, okay, I said that already. The board will now allow for public participation. Public participation is encouraged and will be permitted for district residents for up to 30 minutes. Thank you. Those residents wishing to speak must have previously, previously submitted a completed request to speak forum with the district clerk. Each speaker may not speak more than once at any given board meeting. It is the collective expectation of the Board of Education and District Administration that appropriate decorum will be respected and followed at all times. Under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments, questions or discussion of individual district personnel or students. Inappropriate language, shouting and any behavior that is disruptive and disrespectful will not be tolerated. Any individual demonstrating disruptive and disrespectful behavior will be ruled out of order and asked to leave or will be removed from any board meeting. So the 30-minute public participation period begins now and the time is 8:21. And our first public participation individual is Adam Demel.
My name is Adam Demel. I'm a resident of the district. In a one-year period from December 2020 to November, November 5th, 2021 in the United States, there have been 643,957 adverse reactions and 8,456 deaths attributed to the COVID vaccine. In a 30-year period from 1990 to November 5th, 2021 in the United States, there have been 743,182 adverse reactions and 5,182 deaths attributed to all other vaccines. In one year, there have been almost as many adverse reactions and more deaths attributed to the COVID vaccine than there have been in the last 30 years from all other vaccines combined. I bring this up right now because in the state legislature, there's a bill being proposed, Bill A8378, which adds COVID vaccine to be a requirement to attend school. A COVID vaccine that only has an emergency approval and is still in the experimental phase. Dr. Eric Rubin, who's an infectious disease expert and sits on the Pfizer Biotech Committee, stated in regards to the possible vaccine side effect, myocarditis, and I quote, "We're worried about a side effect that we can't measure yet, but it's probably real. We're never going to learn how safe it is until we start giving it." Is this board and district really okay with any of this? If you're not, why hasn't a, a statement been issued to the governor like other school districts in this county? And why haven't you addressed this issue with any of the parents? Time after time, the board fails to take a stand or attempt any form of leadership on issues that are affecting every family in the district. All we get from the board is silence and then the district gets bullied by the state and the board says, well, the state said so, so we must do it. We were even told by the administration that they don't even vote on issues unless they consult with the school's district attorney first. The board and the administration dropped the ball and folded on the mask mandate, even after evidence was provided that they did little to prevent the spread of COVID. And that was a mandate, not a law. It was just a statement made by unelected officials and you all cowardly from the fight. If you don't stand up now and this bill passes, it will become a law. And then parents in this district will be forced to make a choice to unenroll their children from the public school system that they're legally entitled to or be forced to give their children an experimental vaccination that the creators have openly admitted that they don't know what the side effects could be. I'm asking, in fact, I'm demanding that each and every one of you goes on record about whether or not you are for or against this vaccine bill. So the residents, residents and parents of the district can hold each and every one of you accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to speak is Heather Coppola.
Good evening. Okay, so there's a few things I want to bring up tonight, but most importantly is this first topic. Going back to our May meeting, we were discussing, discussing the protocols that Three Village were implementing and why so many things were being done under an abundance of caution. It was said by the superintendent that one child in Three Village to get sick from COVID because of some of the things that Three Village did or didn't do would be one child too many. The statement was made and I vividly remember standing up here and I said, "Remember that statement when the vaccine comes around." Board member has nodded. Two of them are not here today that did that. Well, here we are. Now you'd have to be living under a rock, obviously, to understand what's going on with vaccine mandates around the world. I want to pause though, I want to pause because this is not pro-vaccine, this is not anti-vaccine. It's not about that. It's about personal choice. Now to go on, it's known that this vaccine can cause harm, injury or death to children. I'm not talking numbers, just facts, even if it was one child. One child taken, given this vaccine has caused injury. Now, if one of those children were a Three Village, Three Village student, it would be one child too many, correct? Because that was said. So I just want to make sure that still stands true. Now I feel like I could read every board member up here, your minds and you're saying, okay, well, if it's mandated by the state, what can we do? That's correct. Obviously, if it's mandated by the state, we have to follow. But there is something you can do now. You could be advocating for choice for parents in your district that are so fearful that this is going to come down. Literally planning, what are we going to do if this comes down? One child being forced to get this vaccine, one family being choice, being forced to give their child this vaccine to attend school in our district and one child getting vaccine injured from this vaccine, that would be one child too many, right? So what I'm asking, to be honest, I really have no faith that the full, the district as a whole is going to advocate for anything. Because we've asked you to do so for parents' choice and you've never done it. You did for athletics, but I guess that's another whole different topic, right? So forgive me if I don't have too much faith that Three Village administration as a whole is going to do anything. And I know that we have our lawyers present now, so I wish that we could, it could be an open back and forth thing. I wish I could ask every board member, will one of you stand up and advocate for Three Village? Write a letter, do something. Because parents, we're nervous. Not just me, not just the ones presented here. And you'll hear more about that later from somebody else. But parents are concerned and there's going to be, you, you think the mask thing was a big deal? You guys had security here for masks? Buckle up. That's all I have to say. Get ready. Because there are parents, like I said, that it's not an anti-vax, pro-vax. There are people, we all know that are vaccinated, that don't want to do it to their kids. Just get ready. That's it.
Thank you, Heather. Next up is Kimberly Biello.
Good evening. I just have a couple of points I wanted to bring up. First, as Heather stated, the vax mandate, I really think you guys do need to be prepared. You guys did not advocate for us with the masks. A letter could not be sent. There are other districts around us that have sent letters from their board, from their superintendents advocating, telling them, our parents want parent choice. You guys need to step up. Secondly, back in August, when you had your school reopening plan, you mentioned mask breaks, that they would be implemented, that they would be followed. That's not happening again. There are plenty of parents that could tell you their child are not getting adequate mask breaks. This needs to be looked into and we need to take this seriously, especially when they're sitting there for eight hours a day and have to wear these things. Third is virtual schooling when they're quarantined. These kids on definitely through K through sixth are not getting adequate education. An hour a day with a teacher on topics they're not even following in the classroom. They're going back and being behind on what they're missing. It needs to be consistent and coherent with what they're learning in class and then what they're being given at home. It needs to be consistent. There's no reason why a child, especially the healthy ones that are being quarantined, should have to go back and be lost on what the kids are doing when they miss their time. So that needs to be looked into. Secondly, is a question in regards to the individual schools anti-racism task force. These meetings are being held in school. Why aren't they being public like PTA meetings are being brought up live? This meeting's being brought up live. As you said, the budget meeting is going to be brought up live so people can watch from home. This is a meeting also that parents that are not on the committee need to know what's going on. And we should have availability to that, especially when minutes or agendas aren't being posted. So that's it for my topics tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Kim, we are definitely, absolutely going to look into mask breaks and the quarantine instruction that you're speaking of. And I appreciate that information. Thank you. Next up, I'm sorry, is Anne Shimelis.
Good evening. I've attended many of these board meetings, especially over the last two years. This is the first time that I'm actually getting up and speaking. I'm speaking today to share personal experience and personal perspective about the importance of diversity, equity and inclusion and our social emotional learning for our students across the district. I moved here about 10 years ago. I have two children that are half Hispanic, half Caucasian. Both children are members of the LGBTQ community. I'm sad to say that my son, who graduated in 2015, he was a sophomore when we moved here and my daughter was a first grader at Sotocat. I'm sad to say that not much has changed about how the queer community in Three Village is being treated. And now my daughter is experiencing some of the same issues among her friend groups and towards herself as well. These issues are escalating from verbal issues such as being called derogatory names, having slurs hurled at them, being screamed at, things like that, to physical altercations, not that have involved my daughter yet and hopefully won't at all, because otherwise then you'll be hearing from my attorney, not from me, and from the police. There are several of her friends who have been the victims of physical assaults. One of the problems that I'm seeing is that everyone's all upset about DEI and SEL. But what they're not realizing is that our children here in Three Village are, are part of a bubble. And that bubble doesn't have very many people that are different from themselves. And so this leads, my son told me, to a lot of incorrect assumptions. He met students, we came from a diverse area to a very not diverse area and he met students that had no idea about issues related to people of color or people in the LGBTQ community. And it wasn't out of malice, it was just out of misinformation or incorrect assumptions. That's why DEI and SEL is so important here. To teach our students about how their actions can impact others in ways that maybe those students that are instigating these actions aren't aware of. It can also provide Three Village students a positive exposure to different cultures, different groups, and ideally starting that at a younger age. I've had in-depth conversations with Mr. Fife and Dr. Gold up at the high school. They've been very receptive to working together to address both of these more immediate issues and concerns related to what's going on at the high school, but also the long-term goals of instituting some of these programs to prevent these kinds of actions from happening again. So, you know, I know my time is up, but I keep hearing the same thing over and over again. I think parents need to stop thinking about this globally and start thinking about how it impacts each individual child. Because they're kids that are hurting out there and, and they need our help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Ian Farber.
Good evening. Ian Farber, resident and parent of the district. A great line was once said at San Dimas High School, "Be excellent to one another." I argue to do so, we must learn about the things that have been said and done over the years that at best fail to live up to that virtue and at worst destroy the fabric of humanity. Learning about such atrocities can be extremely uncomfortable. However, is it not when we are pushed out of our comfort zone that we grow in mind, body and spirit? Some school districts have chosen the path of banning teaching of these events. That in itself is a crime against humanity and we must never hide our history, good, bad or otherwise. We live in a world that has both beauty and horror. Many of us do our best to expose our children to the world's beauty, but we must also prepare them for the horrors in the world. As they themselves might become the target or may have the opportunity to help a friend in need, sheltering them by banning uncomfortable topics does them no good. As members of this community, we have many similarities and many differences. We should acknowledge our differences and celebrate them. Differences of religion, race, culture, sexual orientation need not lead to discrimination or hate. They are to be embraced for those differences add to the world's beauty. Learning about how different groups have been discriminated against doesn't foster hate, nor does learning about the human tendency towards cognitive bias. These studies help build an understanding of what needs to be done better. Many people on Long Island and even the larger surrounding area know that Three Village is a beacon of education. This was a major factor in why my wife and I chose to raise our children here. We don't send our children to school to only learn the bare minimum core courses as that would simply be training to be good little worker bees. When children of Three Village graduate and move on to the larger world, they will be exposed to and be part of an even more diverse community. It is imperative for both their success in career and their success as decent human beings to have an understanding, an appreciation and ability to embrace the diversity of our world. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Next up is Nicole Haranitis. Oh, close.
Okay, hello, everybody. Sorry, some technical difficulties. Okay. Hi, my name is Nicole Haranitis and I am a resident of the district. I'd like to follow up regarding some previous statements that have been made that I haven't been able to address because I haven't been here. So first, I just want to say that after being out of school for 18 months, my son and our family have been welcomed back to school with open arms and we are so grateful. All of his teachers, the principals, monitors and many others have helped make this transition to in-person learning as smooth as possible for him and have offered so much support. So I did not want that to go unnoted. Just back to some old business quick, just to kind of close it up and move on. Over the course of last year, I expressed, expressed my concerns over some of the materials my son, who is seven years old, was assigned. One of the assignments was the Juneteenth video. I did not think it was appropriate for my seven-year-old to be presented with cartoon images of the KKK. Nor did I think that stating the Fourth of July is a white person's holiday or being given an assignment to compare the Fourth of July to Juneteenth was even close to making sense, especially for a seven-year-old. The two are unrelated. I know there are people who disagree with me. However, one obviously relates to the freedom of a country as the other relates to actual human beings. Also, the video states that Texas was the last state to free the slaves. This is not even factual. At the time, Delaware and Kentucky were still slave states. If you want our children to learn about the past as to not repeat it, you are responsible for ensuring that that information is factual and that it is age-appropriate. It was stated that this video had not been assigned to any class. That statement is false. I have a copy of the assignment for you. I saw it with my own eyes. I sat there. So to be told it didn't happen is clearly disheartening. I know our class was not the only one. I'm wondering what tools are being used to identify what the children are being assigned and accessing when a parent addresses a concern or in general. Clearly, you don't know. I don't know if you have heard of the ZIN Project and their pledge to teach the truth. The ZIN Project supports the 1619 Project, Southern Poverty Law, Center Black Lives Matter at school. These are one-sided racially, racially divisive political narratives. Thousands of teachers signed a pledge to continue to present these ideas, even if they are instructed not to do so. There is a list of 211 pages, thousands of teachers on it. I have a portion of it printed out for you and there is a name on it that you will recognize. I have a portion of it printed out for you, and there is a name on it that you will recognize. When you see it, you will understand everything that I have said last year. This teacher does not work here. I don't want anybody to think that she does not work here anymore, but I'm just supporting what I said last year that was dismissed at the September meeting. So I just want you to know that this is where it all came from. You want to teach the past?
Mrs. Haritounidis, your time is up. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay.
Thank you. Can I give you?
Very much so, please. Thank you very much.
If you want to talk about the interme- I would be very happy to do that.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Next up is Jennifer Solomon.
I'm Jennifer Solomon. I'm a district resident, product of the district, parent of the district. I'd like to thank the Board of Education, the district administration, the teachers and the staff for all that they do to support our students and to keep them safe at school. As we enter this holiday season with thoughts of thankfulness and giving, the old saying, "It's better to give than to receive," has been on my mind. We teach this to our children from an early age, the idea that there are benefits that we derive from giving to others. When we give our time, our energy, our gifts to others, we see how they benefit. Our recipient feels joy and gratitude. As the giver, we feel a sense of gratification, fulfillment, and happiness. We give something away, but we feel good. We feel more complete. Equity and inclusion are very much gifts that we can give ourselves. Our community and our society benefit when we include everyone. It may seem scary that somehow, if I give some of what I have to others, that there is less for me, but that's not the case. It's not a zero-sum game. In fact, when we lift others up, we all benefit. Even in economics, when a small group of fast-food workers walked off the job in New York City in 2012 demanding an end of poverty rate wages, they were earning $7.25 an hour, and demanded instead a minimum wage of $15 an hour, people feared that there would be a loss of employment or that businesses would reduce their hours. But the movement spread and ultimately resulted in over $68 billion of their salary dollars being pumped into the economy. The paradigm holds true when it comes to history, too. I may worry that by telling others' story, that my own story will somehow be diminished or tainted, but when we tell others' stories, we elevate and we validate. For example, telling the story of the Wampanoag sacrifice and loss does not take away from the urgency of the early European settlers who fought for, who sought freedom and fought for their own survival. The story wouldn't be complete if we only told one part. When we consider both sides, we come to our own Thanksgiving celebrations with greater perspective and reverence. I invite my friends and my neighbors to consider how, in the context of our schools and our curriculum, we may all benefit from including others. We give the gift of belonging and we gain a sense of dignity. I wish you and yours a very happy Thanksgiving and a meaningful holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Maria Cavato.
Hi, my name is Maria Cavato, resident here in the district, and I'm speaking to urge the board to reconsider mandates being forced unconstitutionally. Did you know that ibromectin has been proven to work for decades? It is the main treatment in Florida and in many countries. Did you know that hydroxychloroquine has been around for decades also and has been used in many countries and is easy to make, in fact, and I know how to make it if anyone wants to? Did you know the federal law prohibits mandates of emergency-use COVID-19 vaccines, tests, and masks for schools and employers? And that you can find in The Defender, May 18, in 2021. Did you know emergency-use products are by definition experimental? Did you know vaccine companies must follow Nuremberg code prior to creating a vaccine? Did you know vaccine companies failed all 10 codes from the Nuremberg law? Did you know a vaccine can't be created if there are any known treatments that heal without harming a patient, and I just named two? Did you know all emergency-use authorized are subject to informed consent with the right to refuse without consequence? Did you know that that means schools cannot tell parents that kids cannot attend school if unvaccinated, and schools cannot vaccinate them either? They can't be forced to wear masks as well, and neither do they have to take a test to prove that they don't have COVID. Did you know that over 500,000 deaths occurred due to vaccines for COVID-19? Did you know the authorities are literally going against science? The FDA is not trying to help us. Did you know COVID-19 virus is patented? Look up the patents. These violate the Fourteenth Amendment and our First Amendment right. Did you know? Here it is. Sorry. All parties mandating the use of face masks and tests or the COVID vaccines are not willfully ignoring established science but engaged in what amounts to a whole-population clinical trial.
Mrs. Cavato, thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Next up is Jessica Rudin. Rudin?
Good evening to each of you. My name is Jessica Rudin, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. As a resident, a lover of this beautiful district, and a mother of three bright and wonderful children, I come to you with great concern of the imminent vaccine mandate for our children. This is not only a concern for me, but for many parents, grandparents, and guardians in our district, as well as all throughout the state of New York and our country. Tonight, I present you a letter with the attached signatures of 139 residents of this district that agree that vaccinating a child should be an absolute choice of the parent or guardian, especially with the vaccine that is this new. We, as a unified community of caring and concerned people, ask you to do whatever it is within your authoritative power to prevent these mandates from being implemented within our district and state. In addition to signatures from residents in our district, you will also find a link to our change.org petition entitled "New York Parents Against COVID-19 Vaccine Mandates for Children," which has garnered over 27,000 signatures of New Yorkers. I will now present to you a few supporting reasons we find the matter of choice so important. On July 30, 2021, the director of the CDC, Dr. Rochelle P. Walensky, released a statement saying, "Delta infection resulted in a similarly high SARS-CoV-2 viral loads in vaccinated and in unvaccinated people. High viral loads suggest an increased risk in transmission." And she later stated that vaccinated people infected with Delta can transmit the virus. Knowing this, what is to say that the vaccine would protect any of us from future variants? More information is needed before we, as parents, can make a well-informed choice. Additionally, when the FDA voted on October 26, 2021, to approve the Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine for children ages 5 to 11, FDA advisor Dr. Eric Rubin said, "We're never going to learn how safe this vaccine is until we start using it. That's just the way it goes." As I hope you can see, the fact that an amount of time needs to pass before we know just how this vaccine will affect our children should be reason enough for it to be left up to choice and not by mandate. As you read through the names attached to this letter, I ask you to consider how you might feel if something bad happened to one of these children as a result of a mandate and a parent left with no choice but to vaccinate. Each of these people are human. Each human has their own heart, mind, body, soul, and people who surround them that they care about, just as each of you have. To tell any group of people that they must do something and have no choice, even though it goes against what they believe in and every fiber of their being, is morally wrong. I thank you again for the opportunity to speak tonight. I leave you here with hope from every family attached to this piece of paper, these 139 people and all of their children, that you'll do anything in your power to grant us with the moral right of medical choice. Thank you.
Next up is Jim Silveri- Silveriario. Jim? Sorry.
Thank you. I'm here tonight because I think that we're such a divided community, and I feel like the conversations we should be having should be about how do we keep our community safe in a global pandemic that's taken over 700,000 American lives? How do we teach our children to understand the world, not just within the zip code, but when they leave here? People who don't look like them, don't worship like them, don't love like them, don't come from the same places they do. And I feel like if we were putting kids first, if this was about community and kids, that's the conversation we'd be having, but it's not. And I know this because I was targeted personally by a group that is being monitored by the Southern Poverty Law Center just last week. They told their listeners to come to this board meeting to terrify Shoshana Herskowitz in Three Village. That's a direct quote. Now, that doesn't sound like it centered around community or children. It sounds like it is attempted harassment and intimidation, and the law enforcement and legal professionals that I have contacted agree with me on that. They then went on to say that they were looking into my finances and that you wouldn't believe how much money this woman has. Now, I'm late to this meeting. I came from work. I'm an adjunct professor. It's not exactly known to be a particularly lucrative career. It's not even a living wage, which is why I work three part-time jobs to make ends meet to live in this community. So all I can surmise is it had nothing to do with the life I live and everything to do with my very Jewish name and invoking a centuries-old anti-Semitic trope. It is 2021. This has no place in the public discourse, none whatsoever. And if we teach history as it actually happened, if we go back and we read Anne Frank and we read Night and we read The Cage, then these folks who don't want to talk about any of this stuff would understand? Families like mine, we've lived through Middle East wars. We've lived through the Holocaust. We've lived through Russian pogroms. This is not how you terrify Shoshana Herskowitz. It's unpleasant, but I've learned that in the face of harassment and intimidation and, yes, bigotry, I do not have the privilege of staying silent. And I'll leave you with a thought from the late James Baldwin, an author that kids should read in high school alongside Maya Angelou and Toni Morrison and all the authors of colored people seem intent on canceling. He says, "For they are each our children, and we will profit by or pay for what they become." And I'm here to hope that our children become better than what we are seeing in our community and across Long Island right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim? I'm sorry, there's Jim? Okay. You're up next.
Sorry for the delay. It was a couple of blocks away. Topics two parents chose to speak about at last month's board meeting had me doing some research. One mom mentioned the DEI book list. I was able to confirm the sad fact, there were no uplifting American stories from historical figures such as Condoleezza Rice, Colin Powell, or Robert Woodson. Or still, there was nothing from civil rights icon, the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. No letter from Birmingham Jail, no I Have a Dream speech from the man who literally gave his life in the struggle for diversity, equality, and inclusion. When the mother of an elementary school student raised concerns about the mask mandate for her child, I pulled up an article featured in New York Magazine. It was entitled "The Science of Masking Kids at Schools Remains Uncertain." It was written by David Zweig, Z-W-E-I-G. The author refers to an underreported section of a CDC study covering 90,000 Georgia elementary students, some of whom were masked while others were not. The results demonstrated masking requirements of students failed to show an independent benefit. That requirement did not have a statistical impact. This info was shared with the Board of Education. I asked if there were other CDC studies contradicting those findings. I received a timely response from the board president, Superintendent Pettish, and Dr. Sussman. Cliff Notes' version of it is while there were no studies found to this point, Dr. Sussman would continue to search for more recent data. Meanwhile, the CDC guidelines would continue to be followed. For almost 30 years, I taught in elementary schools. A fun exchange while babysitting for our three-and-a-half-year-old grandson has reminded me of how critical it was to a young child's social development to be able to give and take subtle cues and clues from facial expressions. Walking through the door without knowing these blue bag of toys was my first mistake. Trying to talk my way around it didn't help. Did Papa bring the blue bag? Eh, eh. Yeah, I thought we'd play with Roman's toys today. No seal. How about the Good Humor truck? That one I could have put in my pocket. Eh, didn't have anyone for that. So I said, "I think Noni brought it to work." I see a little grin go across his face, then a big smile, and I joined him, and he looked at me and said, "No, she didn't, Papa." I think the negative effect of blocking this kind of what used to be typical personal interaction between adults and young elementary school students is being badly underestimated by too many people. I hope I'm wrong, and I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, so we are at the half-hour mark. We have completed everyone who filled out a form that wished to speak. I have one email that I will read. The sign that welcomes all to Murphy Junior High School says, "The aim of education should be to teach us rather how to think than what to think. To do otherwise steals one of their most important skills for students, the self-determination ability. This goal is achieved by teaching facts, not opinion. Educate our children on arithmetic, reading, writing, grammar, historical facts, science, etc. Provide our children with basic knowledge and skills in academia. Be concerned about providing these building blocks, as that is the purpose of public education." One of the questions I had asked during the BoE election was seeking the candidate's opinion on the 1619 Project. It was readily apparent by the answers no one was familiar with it. It was disappointing that the BoE were ignorant of proposed curriculum. Regardless, the 1619 Project states as fact that this country was founded in 1619, the year when slaves were brought to America. It further goes on to state as fact that the American Revolution was fought to maintain slavery, and every event in American history essentially was to protect slavery or is the product of slavery. It has been discredited by an overwhelmingly number of acclaimed and accepted historians. Rejected sounds as factually inaccurate, because as our forefathers stated in the Declaration of Independence, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." Every day since 1776, the United States has taken steps to ensure that we live up to that promise. It's not to say that there haven't been horrible things in our history that deprived men, women of those truths therein, and those horrible things should be taught accurately and factually. My point is not to deprive our children of learning, but my point is to teach our children accurately and factually. This brings me to the pop video on Juneteenth. I found it wonderful that Juneteenth is being taught to our students. However, unfortunately, the pop video is historically inaccurate. Juneteenth celebrates the day a Union general rode into Galveston, Texas, to announce that Lincoln had freed the slaves in the Confederacy. Sadly, two border states in the Union had not yet abolished slavery, and it remained legal in those two states for months after Juneteenth. This opens up an entire discussion about border states in regard to the Civil War, as well as the passing of the 13th Amendment, which abolished slavery nationwide. Here, the accurate teaching leads to- Here, the accurate teaching leads to learning more history, not less. History is comprised of facts. History is not my truth or your truth. It is essential that our country's history is taught, the good, the bad, and the ugly. When I see criticism of parents complaining about curriculum, it's alleged that parents want to maintain teaching a whitewashed version of history and that parents are fighting the attempt to teach about slavery, our treatment of Native Americans, Jim Crow laws, and the civil rights movement and accomplishments. However, I have no idea where these people went to school that they could possibly think that these things are not already taught in schools. I went to Catholic school from K to law school. Huh? And there's no time up on emails. I didn't think. I got this far. I'm almost done. And as conservative as you'd like to perceive that education, apparently it's shocking in the 1980s that I learned any of those things. Let me be clear, parents are not fighting to keep historical events from being taught. Rather, we are fighting, A, keep opinions out of history, and B, ensure that history is comprised of accurate facts. Stop focusing on creating wokeer students or activist students. Return, I say return because it seems to have been forgotten, the focus on academically wiser students. Thank you very truly yours, Mary Ellen David Esquire. So, just a couple of things real quick. The next Board of Ed meeting will be December 15. The next Policy Committee meeting will be December 8 at 6:00 p.m., right here at North Country. The next Facilities Committee meeting will be January 5 at 6:00 p.m. The next Audit Committee meeting will be January 5 at 6:30. They're back-to-back, also here at North Country. I'd like to... Give me something? Okay. So I'd like to wish everybody a very, very happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy your family and loved ones, near and far, and we will be back here in December, and have a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday to all.